Be built, but in the interim, they have sought permits to have modular construction on the site. They're now seeking a third upon which we would make the request for the commission to grant the two existing modular buildings as permanent facilities with the third proposed being the third additional permanent facility at that north, that'd be the northwest corner of the campus. The adjoining land uses here, we have Marshall School that is directly to the west, military housing on both areas. There's kind of a little canyon somewhat in here where it's an open space area that separates that to the housing. Back here, this is all currently undeveloped area within the four, um, former four door, and then we have the Bane and Golf courses is in the landmark that's further to west. And then access would be off of the road, Newman Watson, and there's a road accessing that. This is the campus area. This is the existing administrative building, other classrooms here. The school, um, was established K through eight, and they have since, in the last five years, have expanded their middle school and high school grades. This is a specialized education school. It specializes primarily for dyslexic, but they have other learning disability and challenges that they also offer at the school. The proposed use here in yellow are the existing modular buildings. Do have photos that I'll go into further on this. And then this would be the third building. It would be the proposed. It's a little bit larger. It's about twenty, uh, it's about two thousand square feet with the other facility structures being about nine hundred and ten square feet. Here's off street parking area as you come up from the road up to Newman Watson, which comes, wraps around this way. So again, the school's established two thousand and two. Uh, we have modular buildings which were approved. First one that were approved in two thousand and nine. We have granted extensions since because we had a five year permit, um, status on the modular buildings as they were beginning to reelect to, um, look at their phases that they were looking to expand the school at that one corner of the area. Um, additional modular building now would be needed for high school grades. And also the modular buildings are, um, lead construction and they do qualify and they are compatible with the existing lead status that this facility received when it was originally constructed. So here in the site plan, you can see the overhead view of the existing modular buildings. This is the proximal location of where the new structure would be. There will be decking that will surround this area with ramps that will connect. So there will be ADA access connecting because this area, um, is kind of starts a slope a little bit from this point back to the wooded area. So there would be some ADA ramps and decking around this facility for access to both buildings. Um, here's just the overview as it relates to the, um, rest of the campus. Floor plan, the other buildings are one single, um, classroom building. These would be separated into, um, different classroom spaces and they also are providing, um, multi-accommodation bathroom for this facility. Here we have, um, this would be the perspective. This would be looking, um, at the building from the, um, east side looking west. Um, here is perspective looking toward the west. This would be the front of the building looking directly to the west. And then this would be, um, a build, this would be looking from the southeast. The building would have, um, a horizontal, um, kind of lap sighting with some solid finishes. And you'll see in the photographs that show how these match up with the existing structures. So these, this is the, um, existing modular building that is on the far east side. Um, again, existing modular here in the shadows, you can see the other building. This is a view from the campus looking in toward the other modular building. This, just to give you perspective of a view of the campus building that exists in one of the classrooms. And then this is the, the main quad building and this is the main, this is where the administrative office area is and a, um, in a gymnasium, small gymnasium area. City staff has evaluated that, um, the proposed buildings, um, are serving a vital need for the, for, for the school. The representatives for Charlestown School here this evening to kind of give you an understanding of where the direction of the school is going in terms of this facility, how it's meeting their current curriculum and how it's compatible and serves the lead status on the existing facility. We had provided in the evidence and findings that, um, would be showing that the project's compatible. Um, it's not requiring any additional utilities or any accommodations of that sort to, to facilitate this. The buildings would have sprinklers as required by the fire department and, uh, there's also the ADA access is being accommodated through the ramps that are being, and the decking that's being provided around this, the, uh, structure. So staff at this time, that'll conclude our presentation.
You said that there would be no additional utility, but you said there's any bathrooms going in and these buildings. Isn't that part of the utilities?
We're not, we're talking water lines, sewer lines. All the facilities that are necessary to accommodate that would be compatible and would accommodate this, um, addition.
Where's, we have the extra water for the extra bathrooms, is that?
There is six acre feet that's allocated to this project. The project's currently using four point five.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, anything for staff?
Just have one question. I didn't understand the second part of that. And to declare the existing modular building to remain as permanent buildings, that kind of came out of the blue to me.
Well, they were, um, they were originally approved as temporary because they have the idea that they would be expanding the campus at that side of the facility into the existing buildings, which I showed you in the photographs. They now, um, will explain the direction the school is taking and how these facilities are being looked at to accommodate a high school grade. High schools were not, grades were not initially part of the curriculum. They've expanded it to that. Um, they can give you a breakdown too of specialized nature of the school, how it services and, and the function that these would be needed. And they would demonstrate that the compatibility is that these aren't, um, modular trailers that you're going to see of portals like you see in some of these, these classrooms, these classrooms. These modular buildings have a different construction and they can represent that and explain that to you.
They were temporary prior to this?
Temporary because they weren't, uh, a permanent construction of the type that was originally approved were the other, um, campus buildings.
So nothing that has to be done from a code standpoint now that they're permanent?
They would comply with the bully code just as they would if they were a permanent structure. It's just that the type of construction that we have in existing facility would not be the same as these modular facilities.
Didn't they get the high school over four years ago?
They have added that, but they are expanding and the school representatives can give you an overview of why they need the current expansions with this new facility.
Okay. Anything else for staff? Okay. Thank you. Okay, we will open this up to the, um, the applicant at this point.
Yes.
Hi there. I'm John Legar. I'm the, uh, campus director, um, of Charlestown Schools. The reason why we are looking to the expansion is because we are a school for children with language-based learning differences, which includes dyslexia. Now, with our high school program and with the school itself, we try to maintain a low teacher-to-student ratio. With our high school growing, um, inside the classroom, if, uh, the need for expansion is to keep that teacher-to-student ratio down. And so instead of putting more children in a classroom, uh, that would have the benefit, would increase the ratio, we are looking to expand to keep the ratio as it is because the teacher-to-student ratio is, uh, just really key to the way that we're teaching the kids, uh, for the most part. Is that a good explanation or do you guys have any further specific questions?
Anything commissioners? I have one question. I mean, we've, we've given you multiple extensions on these. Why, because you were going to build Foundation Up?
Right.
And also why the change now instead of Foundation Up, why going modular?
It is Foundation.
Sir, please don't talk from the, thank you.
Actually, if, uh, if I could, um, Derek is our contractor. He would be able to add, um, more insight when it comes to construction than I would. He could actually approach.
After you, we'll gladly have him come up.
Oh, sure. Um, so, uh, I mean, so why we are going this way is, um, for a lot of reasons. One is that, uh, we have a, like a five, six phase plan that we have overall, but this is going towards an immediate need, not towards the expansion need. And it also comes down to money because the, the whole expansion need would cost millions upon millions of dollars. Well, this would be, give us the ability to move forward in small increments instead of large steps.
Thank you. Commissioners, anything for John Legar? Okay, we'll now hear from your general contractor.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, so I think it would just be worth noting that this is a more modern and new version of what would be considered modular. Couple rationale, uh, points for, for why modular versus Foundation Up. This is being a board in place, foundation, slab foundation, like traditional construction would be. However, uh, in compressing timelines, uh, the, the modulators are being framed in traditional framing style as opposed to modular builds where it appears and a kind of a trailer, as it was mentioned earlier, is dropped in place. This is literally even more robust structure than standard construction so that it can withstand the ability to be craned into place. So, uh, for the about, the amount of mobilization that it would take onsite in that area to stick frame ground up, the stick framing is being done offsite, a lot of finish work being done while the foundation's being done, site work and foundation. So that when foundation is complete, you can marry the modulators with that foundation. So it really compresses timeline and it reduces the amount of tradesmen and equipment onsite, uh, at any given time. So it's a lower impact at school. Finished product is the same as a stick build or traditional build, uh, building.
Okay. How come they didn't follow the architectural plan of the, the main office building? Because they, to me, they look like a hole.
You know, at the end of the day, I can't speak exactly to the entirety of the plan because I haven't been a part of the school's ma- master plan. What I can tell you is the, the aesthetic was married to or matched with the existing buildings closest to it, which do have a nod to the, the, the main building. Uh, not quite as sophisticated, the main building is quite, is quite elegant. These are a little bit more of a, a utilitarian look, but, uh, this building will be a little bit, I would argue, a little bit more modern, but still staying in the same vein as the, the buildings closest to it. It was just meant to be the best of, of all world aesthetically.
And you mentioned, um, for the place foundations for the new unit. The existing modular that's there, is that on a foundation or is that just sitting like a trailer?
Yeah, I believe it's on foundation, but I can't be positive. It is on pier. So it's on a pier, pier foundation.
So is that one going to get a set foundation like the other ones?
That's not something I, I, I'd refer to, yeah.
Okay. Commissioner, all my questions for the contractor? Thank you. We will open it up to public comment. Anybody wishing to speak on this matter can come forth and do so now. Saying nobody, we will close public comment, bring it back to commissioners. Start at your end, Dave.
Understanding the, the issues from the way it's, from our standpoint, more than adequate, I would say.
Okay.
More than adequate.
Okay. It's more adequate.
I think it's.
Questions?
I see concerns with this. I see also, although I do recognize that there are serious concerns in terms of aesthetics. It's not. In terms of the aesthetics. I have no comment.
We have a motion.
I move to approve use permit application number UP nineteen fifteen.
Second. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed. So we have a fact one. Uh, so passes. Okay, well, we will next be looking at Campus Town. General Page forty. Forty? Thank you. Okay, this is the Campus Town Specific Plan Development Project, um, recommended. Planning Commissionists, task of making recommendation on several of the projects entitled, including the Campus Town Specific Plan Development Agreement, the General Plan Amendment, and the Zoning Text and Map Amendments, Including Area Affordable Housing Agreement, and Investing Tentative Subdivision Map, which has been included as attachments to the staff report. Steph?
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. My name's Kurt Overmeyer. I'm the Economic Development Director here for the city. And I'm going to start off just by saying this is a really exciting, uh, moment for me and, and I'm sure for everyone else here because we've been working on this project and, uh, for, well, I, I heard from Mr. Bakel tonight that they started working on this in two thousand and fourteen before I even started working here. But I've been working on it for over three years and we're really excited to, uh, to bring this before you tonight. My job tonight is basically to make an introduction. So I'm going to start with, uh, the city, uh, the city's CQ attorney. Tyson Sahabi. Uh, so, and if you have questions about CQ and the legality of things, he's the guy. And we all, I think you already know, Sherry Damon, the city attorney. And then I have a big team from Campus Town. So if you guys could all wave, that would be great. Um, this is the KB Bakel Development Team. Um, they'll be able to, they'll give a brief presentation later on and, uh, talk to you a little bit about what they're planning on doing and why it's of great benefit to the city. And then last but not least, the architect that designed this specific plan and did the, the lion's share of the hard work in making sure that this was a well-planned, well-thought-out project. And he's going to do a little presentation about the project, the specific plan and the code. So with that, Neil Payton, come on up.
Good evening, members of the planning commission. Uh, I'm Neil Payton. I'm an architect with the firm of Tortique Allison Partners and my office is in Los Angeles. I'm going to take you through the highlights of this specific plan, but it is a rather thick document, so it's just the highlights. I just want to familiarize you with the land that it sits on. Uh, again, this was formerly part of Fort Ord, uh, but within the city of Seaside. Uh, on both sides of, uh, General Jim Moore, which runs diagonally through the kind of western third of the site. When we started this, just kind of, okay, it's, yeah, it's like a little bit more, I think, but just a little, to me, but see now it's, yeah, perfect. Thank you. Um, when we started this effort, we were very aware of the sort of background policy documents that formed the regulatory context that we were working within. Uh, first and foremost, the, uh, the Fort Ord Reuse Plan, which, uh, coupled with the regional and urban design guidelines that were issued later, but as part of the Fort Ord Reuse Authority's purview. These became kind of the, the sacred texts that helped form what we were doing. It really provided the kind of framework for that. Also aware of the city's existing and, uh, proposed general plan and, and current zoning code as well. So they became the kind of backgrounds, uh, and regulatory framework within which we were working. The other thing that, uh, one of the things that was important about the process we, we went through was that we had a week-long kind of public charrette. And what we mean by that is we literally set up a design studio here in Seaside and invited the community to come and talk to us, watch us draw, comment whenever they wanted. We would hear from something like nine to nine every day, uh, had public presentations, but also had informal presentations, met individually with members of the public and with groups, uh, from the public. And really had about as immersive a kind of public comment period while we were actually designing. So, well, they weren't just reacting first, but they were giving and then seeing and then giving more, uh, than I think is typical. And that was very, very helpful. We also then would have someone come to the storefront, uh, uh, planning center here in Seaside, uh, every other week for two days and was available for comment, for listening and, and literally set up an office here, uh, as I said, two days every two weeks for more comment. So we really had a lot of input. And out of all of that input, we developed a set of goals and then a set of sort of strategies. And the goals were these seven. Uh, I'm not going to read them all. You can read, read them easily. These came out of the, uh, both the, the public commentary that we got during the charrette as well as the bi-weekly visits, but also come from our own experience designing walkable, mixed-use, mixed-income communities that we do around California and then we do actually around the nation. We heard a lot about sustainability and we think that's woven through the, the fiber of this plan. Again, Olivia, perfect. Okay, thank you. Sorry, this is not going the other way. And then we have a, a set of sort of tactics that, if, that emerged from those goals. So things that like we call is complete streets. And a complete street is, I don't want to tell you things you already know, so I'm, I'm just going to, but in case you're not familiar with that term. Uh, we mean a street that not only serves cars, but also serves pedestrians and bicyclists and is a place where you can get buses and, and delivery trucks, but also is planted with shade trees. In other words, it's complete. Uh, and it's not just a place for traffic, but it's a place to be a human being and to walk and meet your neighbors. Uh, we also, um, had a number of other tactics that emerged throughout the process, including this kind of east-west street that would link the entire site together, a whole variety of, uh, housing types. Something strange up there. It says intersection density, which might sound like a rather odd thing to put in there. But it's actually a, a goal within the proposed general plan that you're all still working on, I think. And it has to do with how walkable a place is. It turns out the more intersections there are, the more walkable a place is. And so, uh, we followed that prescription or that goal in the, uh, proposed general plan, uh, but also because we think it's good practice. The, the actual process started with these kind of sketches. Again, they emerged from the, uh, Fort Ord, from the, uh, original Fort Ord Reuse Authority Plan. The idea of having several neighborhoods that would define this site. And these circles represent potential neighborhoods. And notice, we weren't just looking at the site. We were looking at the larger context. How did neighborhoods sort of read or appear in this larger context? And so we looked at this site, we looked at CSU MB also as a kind of neighborhood that were all linked together. Here's a, a sort of blow up of that. Uh, and, and with really two kind of primary neighborhoods emerging. And you, and you see those in the circles here. Those circles represent about a quarter of a mile radius, which is roughly the amount of time a, a person taking a brisk walk can go from center to the edge in about five minutes. Which is historically how neighborhoods have been thought of in terms of their size. Again, here you see the total amount of, uh, program or stuff that we're proposing here. Fourteen hundred and eighty-five housing units, up to two hundred and fifty hotel rooms and seventy-five hostel beds. Retail dining and entertainment of up to a hundred and fifty thousand square feet and about fifty thousand square feet of office flex space or maker's space. It turns out to be that way. And again, here, taking that little sketch diagram that emerged from the initial charrette and turning it into an actual, uh, sort of, you know, computer-drawn, accurate, dimensioned plan. And the, looks a little bit different because it's got more detail, but the same idea of the neighborhood is really, uh, informing everything on that plan. And you see those, those sort of di- those circular diagrams sort of indicating that. The colors literally represent the kind of housing or use types. So the yellow represents some form of single-family or attached single-family home, whereas the darker orange or red indicate some sort of mixed-use or, um, retail or, um, commercial space. And then way over on the western edge is a purple building, which is a potential hotel building. It's sort of lavender. It's, actually, on this slide, it's, under this light, it's hard to see the color of it. This is simply a diagram, um, it's the kind of diagram an architect do that show the kind of public space sequence. So what we're really looking at here is how several of the streets connect with a set of spaces, parks, plazas, other places you could be out in the outdoors, uh, maybe to play a game or sport, maybe to, uh, have a coffee, depending on the size and scale and location of that space. But as you can see, they're linked together starting on the eastern edge at the southeast corner through this kind of central street or spine, through a set of, of squares, parks, plazas, uh, and the like. That's also, uh, uh, connected to a, uh, a network of pedestrian trails as well as bicycle trails. When we started the process, we received a map, uh, what's called a foretag map of potential bike trails. And our effort was to link to it, was to connect to it, to form that connection and make sure that you could get through it. And, and, and so there's a, there's a bit of, of, of a grain through the site, north-south, extending from the CSU MB campus through our site, uh, to the south. Uh, and you see the place where there's a T is the connection to the foretag trail. Including, uh, included in that sort of effort is, uh, a street, uh, Malmody Road, which exists already, but which we're proposing to make into a street with a class four separated bike trail. That's one of the key links in connecting two sides of the foretag, uh, trail effort. The specific plan actually goes through all of those street types. This is just one of, of about eight different types from the main street to side neighborhood streets. I'm sure if you've been through the, you've seen all of these, I guess somewhat technical drawings, but showing you the character of each of the street types because it isn't just a set of engineering conditions. It's also a set of space conditions because this is where, again, we humans live and walk. There, there are many of those parks and plazas I refer to. You saw that in the diagram of before. And again, could I ask if you could just push that up? Yeah, thank you. And this is one of them, uh, a, a sort of a central green, uh, that is fronted by homes. It's really important that all of the green spaces here are fronted by buildings. They're not in the back. They're not fronted by garage doors so that nobody sees in. But they don't have homes or in some cases businesses fronting them so that there are always a lot of eyes on the space. Eyes on the park, eyes on the street. This not only makes them feel better when you're in the park, but it actually keeps them safer. And again, a diagram that's similar to the one you just saw, but this really just goes through all of the kinds of, locates all of the parks and plaza spaces that are in this plan. So again, I think what's important to emphasize is that this isn't, this is not merely a subdivision, it's actually a set of neighborhoods with places for people to congregate, to play, to enjoy. It includes a tree safe park. I'm going to go through these quickly. The linear park along the south edge. This is really under the power transmission lines. Neighborhood green. A sports field park. Not really an official sports field size, but more pickup. The square, which we imagine having even some sort of public building or commercial building on it, maybe a restaurant. The expression tavern on the green kept coming up. I don't know if it would be like that, but it could be a restaurant on a main space or a bar or group pub or a community building. That sort of to be determined. Or smaller spaces like a plaza lined with short shop fronts and cafes. And here you see a rendering of that. As part of this effort, as part of this specific plan, are a set of standards referred to in this particular case as a form-based code. So yes, there are quantities total, but importantly here, we're really describing the nature of the spaces themselves and how the buildings help make those spaces. So the code is divided into these areas that you see diagrammed here above. And each of these areas has a character. This one is, we call it campus adjacent. It's a very small area. It was just say adjacent to the campus. Doesn't even have a street along the edge, it has a walkway. And then each of these areas, no matter where they are, has a set of, like any set of code, permitted building types or permitted uses, but also what we're calling permitted building types. And the building types themselves are things like single-family homes or townhomes or things like that. And a set of other standards. So here's an example of a townhome type. And so all the characteristics that go with that. And I'm just giving you examples so that you can understand. Probably didn't need me to help you with this, but so that you know this is the way these standards are organized. Included in that is a set of frontage types. It's really important how every building addresses the public space, the street, the square. Because that's where everybody else who doesn't live in that building interacts with that building. And together, all of those buildings help frame the spaces that we all inhabit. So things like where entries are, how far back a building might sit or close that might sit, how often an entry might occur. If it's a commercial frontage, percentage of glazing that might be only for the shop windows that you can see in. So that you can have underaction, if you will, through the scale of the building and the detail and the scale of your own body as it walks by. And those are important to how you perceive a space. There are two phases associated with this. Phase one is essentially the western half of the site. And phase two is the eastern half of the site. And I think with that, I think with that. I'm going to say thank you for listening.
Any questions, Commissioner? Thank you, sir.
So I want to introduce the applicant. He's standing in the middle or something right there. Just a second. It's your turn, Dan.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's all right, thank you.
Well, Commissioner and members of the, of the commission. Katie Bankwell is very excited to be at this point in the project. As many of you know, we have been working on developing Campus Town Center's plan for about seven years now. But this project has had more community input, more participation from various groups, as Neil mentioned, than any other project in the city of Seaside and probably on the peninsula. But we're very excited about what's come out of it. I think with Tori Galus' input, with community input, with city input, we have really created a first-class campus town development that I think is going to make Seaside the envy, quite honestly, of all of the peninsula. It also is going to transform what at one time was considered some of the most undevelopable land on Fort Ordre to the showcase piece. So it's really an exciting time and we're very excited about it. You know, as requested by the city, as put together by the Fort Ordre Reuse Plan, by the RUDS Plan, the reuse plan, and several other factors. We've created a high-density urban village. And this urban village, as Neil's displayed, talked about, is going to have a possible two hundred and fifty-room hotel, it's going to have retail space, it's going to have office space and a variety of various housing product types. We're very excited about it, but it's going to be more than that. It's going to have open space, it's going to have green space and biking trails and all of the other things that so many in this city talked about they wanted to see in this development. And all of that has been incorporated into this development. You know, so it's an exciting time. I think some of, all of these special features really enhance the nature and the beauty of this area, this region, and really highlight all that Seaside and this area has to offer. I think lastly, you know, when we signed up for this, we understood what was required and some of the things that you'll be looking at today. You know, we understood when we first embarked on this that there was a need for affordable housing and that there's a twenty percent requirement. We understand that. We stepped up to that, we're not trying to get around that. So we think affordable housing is going to be a good thing and it's going to be at every level, at every level. Very low, low and moderate affordable housing. You know, we understand this, you know, this development is going to create jobs. It's a prevailing wage project and we understand that and that's all been incorporated in here. But more important, we also understand that Seaside has a policy of Seaside first as a business practice. We want to make sure that we're reaching out to the community, that we're recruiting businesses to come into Campus Town Center and that the people who have supported this project for the past seven years get the first opportunity to participate in this project. And lastly, Katie Bankwell is not new to this community. We've been around for a long time. And we've probably done more in this community and tried to give back and be supportive of things in the community than any other business that's been in the city of Seaside. At least that's my opinion based upon what I know we've done. So we're very excited about this project. We look forward to hopefully answering any questions you guys have moving this project forward and really bringing to Seaside probably the most stellar development, not only in Seaside, but in the Monterey Peninsula in years. So thank you very much.
Questions? You mentioned that it's going to be prevailing wages. Is that it, the whole project, housing, everything?
Yes.
Very good. Anything? Thank you.
Thank you.
Staff?
That's actually the end of our presentation for tonight, so we're open to answer any questions that commissioners might have and then I believe we need to hold a public hearing and take public comment at that time and then we'll look for you guys to move along the recommendation.
I have a question. You know, with all this open spaces, public parks, you know, sports parks, who maintains them? Who pays for them?
So the applicant has agreed that there will be either a homeowners association or what we call a community facilities district that will handle the maintenance, not just of the parks and open spaces, but as well as the street trees, the rain gardens and water infiltration systems, lighting, the areas that are public space that are actually owned by a homeowner. All of that will be covered by either a community facilities district or by a fee that is part of the homeowners association.
I do have one question for you. So the parks are going to stay green. They're not going to be like the rest of the parks in our city that are brown and ugly.
Yes, they will.
So maybe you can come up with a plan to make those ones nice and green.
Always working on it.
Okay, thank you.
Have the open space.
Okay, we will open this up to public comment. Please keep your comment to three minutes. Somebody will put the clock on for you. So anybody wishing to come forth and speak on this item, they can come forth and do so now.
Can I also add a, also state the city they're from too?
What? Oh, yes, please state your name and city, your address, please.
And just to be clear, it's not just public comment, we're opening a public hearing.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Good evening, members of the planning commission. My name is Frederica Jones. I'm a member of Greater Victory Temple Church. And I am here on behalf of Greater Victory Temple Senior Pastor, Dr. Ronald Britt, and the entire Greater Victory Trustee Board. And we at Greater Victory are wholeheartedly approve of this Campus Town project, not only as we look forward to potential growth and development in our neighborhoods, but as well as moving our city forward in addressing the need for housing for our members of our community and our residents and the potential employment opportunities that this project will bring. And we just thank you for your time this evening. Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is PK Difunba. I'm the superintendent of Monterey Peninsula Unified School District. And I'm speaking here not on behalf of my board, but as myself as an individual. I want to talk to you about how important this project and other projects like this is to our district. Every year, Monterey Peninsula Unified hires between eighty to a hundred teachers, which represents about twenty percent of our teaching force. And in our exit interviews, teachers often comment that the lack of affordable housing is the reason why they are leaning to pursue other opportunities in less expensive areas. So you can imagine how difficult it is to create a world-class system if you're turning over twenty percent of your workforce every single year and having to retrain that amount of people. So we believe that this housing development with the affordable housing component will help our teachers and help our teachers stay and work where they teach. Secondly, as a district, we are a declining enrollment district. And we're projected between 2016 and 2026 to lose over a thousand students. And what that means is a loss of around twelve million dollars of revenue because of state funds per student basis. So it's going to be a difficult challenge for us to continue to offer the services that we are offering with that much less revenue coming in. And the reason why we're losing families is because young families can't afford to live here. And time and time again, we see that our families are priced out of the community. We believe the affordable housing component of this project will also help to keep our families here, keep the district strong, keep the district growing in the stem and tide of reduced enrollment. So we hope that you consider this very carefully. Know that its impact is much broader than just the city of Seaside. Its impact is on over ten thousand kids in Monterey Peninsula. So thank you.
Good evening, commissioners, members of the public here. Manuel Panero, I'm CEO of Monterey-St. Cruz County Building Trades. I think this is a great project, we're in great support of it. I've been here all my life, fifty-eight years. It's important that we have affordable housing. I got kids that are still in high school. Kind of started late, but anyhow, I want them to be able to afford to live here. Because I have been a union member prior to this for thirty-three years. Prevailing wages near and dear to our heart. You need good wages, not only good wages but good benefits. If you're going to encourage our young people to stay here, may a few more years I'm over the hill, who knows where I'll be. But anyhow, I'm really in support of this and our building trades. And we want that prevailing wage, not only is it going to happen, it needs to be enforced and it needs to be with checks and balances. So on behalf of Monterey-St. Cruz County Building Trades, we support this, it's a great project. And we'll make these other parks look good. Thank you.
Good evening, there are commissioners. Ron Cheshire, Monterey-St. Cruz Building Construction Trades Council Training Director. It's about time. Seaside deserves a good project like this. And as you heard, our CEO, we're in support of it. Looks like a very good mixed-use project. It's going to provide housing opportunities at all levels, at least in better. Because you've already heard what the speakers have said, we need the housing here. But what's really most important is we need the opportunities. And we've heard about the prevailing wage and you knew darn well I was going to speak on this this evening. We need the training opportunities. We need the opportunities that this project's going to provide. We need these opportunities to stay here. See, prevailing wage is paid out in Fort Ordre on all the other developments. But all the other developers have brought their people in from Stockton, Sacramento, Fresno, Temecula, Bakersfield. And I can name you every other valley town up and down and whatever. We need our young people here to have these opportunities. The prevailing wage is great. But we need the developer working with our businesses and our local workers and give them the opportunity to make the money and give them the opportunity to have a career to where they can be able to afford to buy a home around here. If you're just going to give these jobs away to people from outside of the area, it still really doesn't do anyone any good. There are five hundred and eighty apprentices in Monterey County right now in the trades. Twenty-seven come from the city of Seaside. I'd like to see that number expanded and I'd like to see that number expanded around the peninsula also. Because there's only seven in Pacific Grove and seventeen in Monterey and about another twenty-five in Marina. So I know it's not within your purview to really hear all this. But we are in support of the project and we like the land use that's behind it, what's taking place. But we do want to make it known to you and the city that the opportunities that this project provides needs to stay here this time and needs to stay here for the people that you represent. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Michael Solano. I'm representing Key Fort Ordre Wild. Our council sent a letter to the city earlier today. I hope you have a chance to review it. I'd like to give a copy to Donnie for the record. We have a few procedural concerns and then I'd like to get to what's missing. We have a few procedural concerns, and then I'd like to get to what's missing from tonight's hearing. Keep Fort Ord Wild submitted extensive comments on this project primarily to do with water. When we submitted those comments, we specifically requested to be informed of any notices under the Public Resources Code. We received no notices from the city about the hearing tonight, so a primary concern is that there are others who requested notice and are not here at this meeting. We also think there's an issue with the Brown Act tonight. In the agenda, there's a laundry list of potential action items from the council, but they're vague and don't have descriptions. Under the Brown Act, each of those potential items would use its own description. After we reviewed the agenda, we located the public notice in the paper, which was contradictory to the agenda. The public notice actually claimed, oh, I forgot to mention, missing from the agenda, the list of items in the agenda was review of the EIR, but in the paper, the notice claimed, quote, "The planning commission will review and consider the environmental impact report." I remind the commission that the environmental impact report is comprised of the draft and the final. You don't have the final in front of you tonight. There's going to be material differences in the final. It's pretty clear the city has pursued a completely different strategy, for example, on water. We don't have an objection to that yet because we don't know what it is, nor does the commission, nor does the public. So, what we're requesting tonight, because you don't have the final EIR in front of you, is to not take any action, listen to the testimony, evaluate the presentations, but don't take any action tonight because of these procedural problems. Thank you.
Thank you. Public comment still open? Nobody? I don't want to close it too soon. Anybody wishing to come forth? Public comment still open? Public comment still open? We're closing public comment. All right, we'll bring you back to commissioners.
I would actually like the city council to come and give their response to the previous comment around that.
Can we get the, you're already there.
Good evening. My name is Tyson Zohagian. I'm the city's outside legal counsel. Our office has reviewed the allegations made by Keep Fort Ord Wild. We don't find them to be accurate, both factually and legally. Mr. Solerano said that the term environmental impact report includes the final EIR, but it's not accurate if you look at Secret Guidelines, section fifteen, three, six, two. The guidelines make it clear that the term EIR can refer to either the draft or the final EIR. Furthermore, Planning Commission is not taking action on the environmental impact report. Again, the only thing that we're required to do is to review and consider the EIR in draft or final form, and that's pursuant to Secret Guidelines, section fifteen, oh, two, five, C. So, we do not believe that those statements from Mr. Solerano or his counsel are accurate. Furthermore, some of the allegations asserting that the agenda is vague, and Mr. Solerano's counsel says that it can refer to anything, and that it could refer to simply receiving reports, but if you actually look at the agenda item, expressly says that Planning Commission is tasked with making a recommendation, and then proceeds to assess every individual entitlement that the commission is making a recommendation on. The EIR is not included in there because the commission is not making a recommendation on the EIR, nor is it approving the EIR. Happy to answer any other questions if you have any.
Any questions for the outside?
Just a clarification, it seemed like their letter was dealing with something in the newspaper rather than on...
They were alleging an inconsistency between the agenda and the newspaper. I don't believe there is an inconsistency. The newspaper notice expressly said that the Planning Commission would be reviewing and considering the environmental impact report, and I don't believe anything in the agenda contradicts that.
That's my question. So, basically, we're tasked with B on this.
You're tasked with, I'm sorry.
Which is B on the agenda.
Correct.
Which is what you read, which does not have anything on the EIR. None of these words could possibly include the EIR.
No, again, you have an obligation to review and consider the EIR in draft and final form, which is why it has been included, but that is only a finding in the resolution. In fact, it's just a recital of the resolution that you have in fact reviewed and considered the environmental impact report.
Or where in item B is the EIR?
Well, again, that's not an action taken. Again, you're simply reviewing and considering the environmental impact report. The commission is not approving nor is it recommending the environmental impact report.
I'm not making myself clear. If I'm going to review the EIR, as you say, but I'm not going to take an action on it, but there's nothing in item B that even suggests I'm going to review the EIR.
Well, again, the only thing under the Brown Act is that you're required to agenda as actions taken, and again, you are not taking an action on the environmental impact report. And then furthermore, the notice expressly provided information that you would in fact be reviewing and considering, as well as the agenda packet that was attached to the agenda.
I have a quick question for you before you take off.
Certainly.
According, had to do with Mr. Cheshire's comment about locals. I remember, I figure you put this together, right, all the writing on the prevailing wage and everything?
I actually was not involved in the prevailing wage components of this.
Okay.
So, if you have a question related to that, unfortunately, I don't think I'm of much assistance.
Okay. Thank you. Staff? Who does have the knowledge of the prevailing wage?
Well, I'm not an attorney, so I don't want to speak to the prevailing wage law or to how prevailing wage is handled in our contracts, but the purchase and sale agreement that we have entered into with the applicant requires that the project be built at prevailing wage per Department of Labor standards. If you have more detailed questions, I think Sherri Damon, the city attorney, is probably more well-equipped to answer them.
Miss Damon? Yes, I remember it, when this all took place back in ninety-four with the closure and everything, there was supposed to be a certain percentage of locals hired under the prevailing wage. No?
I don't recall that in nineteen ninety-four, although I will say that I did work for the Fort Ord Reuse Authority in nineteen ninety-eight, so I do have quite a history with the Fort Ord Reuse Authority and the history of prevailing wage. And that was, I believe, the early thought process behind the incorporation of prevailing wage in the base reuse plan and in the master resolution. I know that was a huge topic of discussion.
Right, because as I remember sitting in, a few things was that it was to keep money here within these counties that are losing the money. Do we have anything in this paperwork that is going to ensure that at least a certain percentage of our local people will get work out of this?
No, is the short answer, and that's because there are some rules about requiring local hires, and we've got a lot of private money in on this transaction. I have every belief that our developer here is committed to pursuing as many local labor workers as are available to work on this project, and so I know he's listening to the comments of Ron Cheshire and the Building Trades, and is committed to supporting Seaside and its labor force in making this project successful.
Very good. I will bring him up.
Thank you.
Can we get you to come back, sir? The only reason I'm stating this is just because of what many people said here tonight was how expensive it is to live in this town and stuff, and we get very few projects of large size in this town and in this county.
Oh, I am very aware of it, and part of the reason why I mentioned in my presentation, Seaside first, because we understand that. What I can tell you, while I don't think there's anything that contractually says you have to hire this percentage or anything like that, I can assure you that Katie Bakewell fully intends to both have job hiring fairs, contracting fairs, and we will do everything in our power to solicit Seaside residents and businesses first for the opportunity to participate in this project at every level.
Or Monterey County.
Monterey County, but we're going to start at Seaside and work our way out, so we want to be real honest and upfront. In the first place, we're going to be looking for is to the benefit of, for Seaside residents, Seaside businesses, and those of the business, because quite honestly, it is you and the people in this city of Seaside who have supported us throughout this seven-year journey to get this project done. People from outside the city, they've watched it happen, naysayers and supporters, but it's been really the people and the residents of this community and this city who have supported us, and we intend to support them in return. So, thank you.
I have one question for the supervisor. You did state that you were going to put twenty percent for affordable housing?
Correct.
Are you willing to do that, put that in writing?
That is part of the agreement that you guys will be reviewing today. It is in writing, yes.
One question on that. As you know, dominoes fall every time we ask another question. The affordable housing, are the deeds going to be restricted so that they don't hit the open market, so that they continue to stay in affordable housings forever?
I think, and I'd have to, but I believe it's like a fifty-five year on the issue that I live.
I can't quite it.
It's forty-five for rentals, fifty-five for on-rock-by.
Okay. Thank you.
Andy, I think we...
Sorry, the opposite of that, forty-five for on-rock-by, fifty-five for rentals. I had it backwards, my apologies.
I just need to ask to the chair. Are we going to eventually go through some of these documents and look at things, or are we just kind of talking general now? Because I have a general question, but I don't want to preemptive or talk about it.
Well, it is a hearing, and it needs public comment, so I would imagine we'll go over a lot of documents. Anything that you need, you're more than able to answer your question.
I got a little confused, nothing new for me. I got a little confused when we got to attachment ten in the inclusionary housing document. Originally, it talks, the original documents talk about twenty percent, and I probably got my numbers wrong, but somewhere in there it talks about two hundred and some odd, but because of some on and off-site things, and because of the way the code reads, it's going to effectively be like three hundred and fifty units or something like that.
Correct. So, the way that the city of Seaside is, in order to encourage very low-income units and low-income units, and not where someone just builds all moderate-income units and things like that, there's actually, there's a credit, there's a credit of two and a half, or two, two units if you make this unit available for very low-income residents. So, while we have the number of units we're building, the actual credits for those exceed the number that were required. So, that way, we do have some very low income, more very low-income units. We have some low-income units, it's not all kind of monolithic, and everyone's at the same level.
And is there a difference between the on and off-site components? I didn't see any numbers breaking that down.
No, it's really not, because what it is, it's the resident that goes into the unit. So, if that resident qualifies as a very low-income person, and they move into it being onsite or offsite, that's where that comes. We have projections of what those are, and ultimately, that's what we'll recruit.
Yeah, that was my question, is what percentage is going to be offsite, what percentage would be onsite?
We don't know at this point. We've looked at different sites, various sites, but that will kind of be formulated ultimately, but there'll be both onsite and offsite.
Before you leave.
Long as you need me.
And that will be in multiple, like three-bedroom, two-bedroom, one-bedroom? There'll be an even amount?
It will vary, it will vary in two-bedroom, one-bedroom, three-bedroom, it'll vary in rental and for sale. One of the things that I'm focused on is that we create some kind of homeownership workshop so people understand, particularly those who are going to be buying affordable housing units, what that comes with and what that looks like, and they're educated and trained. So, that's one of the things I've been talking to the city manager and city staff about creating that program. You know, people need to understand what really is affordable housing, and we need to educate people on that. So, many people that I've talked to, when they hear the word affordable housing, they think of vouchers and certificates, it's not really that, and we need to educate the residents so that they understand what this really means. So, all of those are things that are going to kind of feather out over the next six months as we go through the rest of this entitlement process, but these are programs that we intend to bring to the city. But the ultimate goal, the city is very focused, their policy is very focused on it, and quite honestly, I've talked about this on numerous occasions, it is our intent that you are not one that knows the difference between a person who lives in an affordable housing unit and a market-rate unit, because they're going to look basically the same. They'll be, you know, they're not going to be able to say that's an affordable housing, that it's going to be kind of across the board, and that's one of the goals that we intend as a developer to ensure, and the city has done a pretty good job of writing that as part of your housing and affordable housing code and requirements, you are.
I believe we have the same belief, too.
Danny, there is a, in that attachment ten, it does allow for lower specs or lower finishes.
Yeah, well, it's not that it allows for a lower standard, what it is, there's a base standard for every unit. What you can't do is upgrade if you're buying an affordable unit, because we can't sell it to you and allow you, because that keeps more debt onto your already affordable unit. If you're buying a market-rate unit, there's a base level, let's just use tile countertops as the base level of the countertop. You can upgrade to marble or granite or whatever you want in yours. Your affordable unit has to stay at that base level because they can't add more debt outside with me or anybody else, so that's really it. It's not that you have to, you have to sell them below, you have to find a base level, and then anybody else can, market-rate, and they can upgrade. That's it. That's standard in the housing.
So, it's actually, yeah, the base model is your affordable.
The base model is our base model. You could be a market-rate buyer, and you could say, "I just want the base countertop, I don't want to buy granite." You just have, you, if you're not buying an affordable, you can't upgrade. That's it.
Go ahead, Danny.
I have a question. So, the market rate and the low income or affordable housing, are they built next to each other?
Yes. Our goal is, we are not going to build, quote-unquote, housing projects where everybody, or all the affordable housing is kind of all lumped together enough, this is designed to be spread out throughout the development in product type, in housing type, in every aspect. So, again, you're not going to be like, oh, those, that's affordable apartment building, and that's the market rate. It's all, everyone is going to be mixed into one development. The only difference where it may be is if we get into some very specific things, we're pursuing with the state to possibly do some veteran housing. We're talking about possibly some senior housing, though we may, but those are really for marketers, and that's really for a specific group, but that's got to be worked out.
Very good. Anything else, commissioners, for Mr. Bakewell? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, commissioners, anything else?
Are we here?
So, we're tasked with a recommendation here on several different items here, and maybe staff can help us with this as to what you're, fortunately, when we usually get a paper, we've got a pretty clear shot of it, but we don't really care. Well, you've got Campus Town specific plan, the development agreement, the general plan amendment.
It's okay, I snuck up. The resolution that's attached takes all the actions that are required, even though they're all listed out separately. So, if you were to recommend adoption of that resolution, that would cause all of the other actions to happen at the same time. And that resolution's attachment three.
Attachment thirty?
Three, I'm sorry.
Through the chair.
Yes, sir.
This was kind of hard on my question earlier. I was just so surprised that, you know, we got... know, we have five or six-page resolution, and these, these are all very complex documents, very involved. Personally, I would prefer that we take them one at a time, we have separate resolutions for each one, unless staff can show that they're all combined, and then, but I have so many questions on fire stations, on, more on affordable housing, uh, what the, the contribution, meaning public benefit contribution, I've been on and on and on, it goes.
'Cause the resolution that I see here, on twenty twenty X, thank you, uh, resolution for the planning commission of the city of Seaside recommending city council approve, one, the campus town specific plan, two, general plans, circulation element amendments, three, zoning map and tax amendment, creating the campus town specific plan district four, or, for the, the development agreement, and five, vesting tentative sub, subdivision map, and six, inclusionary affordable housing agreement for the campus town property.
If the commission has recommendations, the staff do not have, um, six separate resolutions prepared, my recommendation would be, um, you know, staff can hear your inputs, and if the commission is in agreement that those revisions should be recommended, that, um, we can potentially take a recess and incorporate those suggestions into that resolution.
Commissioners, will that work for you?
Not for me personally, I, I would prefer a separate presentation on each one, these are very complex.
Okay, could staff put that together for us?
I think it would take an extraordinary amount of time to prepare six separate resolutions, which is why, you know, theoretically, we could append, um, you know, add additional section at the end that says, "Planning commission recommends the following additional revisions to, A, um, the general plan amendment, or B, the zoning amendment," or the like. But I, frankly, I think, um, it would not be feasible to do six separate resolutions this evening. So I think what would be helpful is for me to walk you through what each of those documents are.
If I might, Gloria Sterns, community development director. So every once in a while, I try to help lead you through difficult situations, and this is one of those where I'm, I'm thinking I might have found a way. I understand that many of you might have questions on these documents, they are complex documents. So what I might urge us to do is to at least hear what Mr. Evans, or Commissioner Evans' questions are, so that way, if staff is prepared to answer those tonight, that we can do so, and maybe then we would be prepared while these questions are being answered, some of us could be preparing six additional resolutions if we needed to, or maybe the questions being answered would suffice with the one resolution. But I leave it up to the chair to decide.
I agree with you a hundred percent, um, it is very complex and convoluted as far as how it's put together here, because normally, we see a single plan, and that's what we're looking at. Right now, we're looking at, uh, several hundred pages, obviously, we just... I think we need time, um, not trying to stall this or anything, but, um, I just, I just got my stuff this weekend, and I've read a lot of it, but I haven't read it in entirety, um, it's quite a lot of pages, so I agree with you. That being said, a lot of it seems to be just stemming around. Would, would, if they asked your questions for you, would you be, feel okay with it?
A lot of the general plan, or the, excuse me, get the right term, the specific plan, um, you know, we have since July, and I've read all of that, but some of these, we just got, I got Monday, I guess I was off the email, so I didn't get them all over yet, but, no, I guess I got them on Saturday, I think Saturday, um, but been crazy the last few days, so I've not gotten all of them, but just, just reading the development agreement, just reading the, just trying to figure out the vesting, the subdivision map, and I mean, there's issues that I'd like to look at and spend some time with, I don't know if that's a working session down at Seaside Grates or what it is, but I'm just throwing out my concerns, I'm not saying we'll be stopped the process or get off the bus or anything like that, but it's just a concern to me that I'm gonna be voting on stuff that maybe I don't need to care about to the notion, but I think I need to care about the notion.
No, I agree with you, that's why we're all here, as separate entities and separate plans, so that we can look at everything in a different perspective. Could we, as far as the specific plan change, um, could staff take us through this? The specific plan district?
I'm not sure what your question is, but if you can clarify, I'm sure I can take you through this, and I, um...
Number three, let's do it that way, is the numbers easier for you than, 'cause right now, you have six numbers up here. Obviously, um, one is the campus town specific plan, which is fine, two is the general plan circulation amen, element amendments, that is a question right there.
So let me walk you through that one really quickly.
Okay.
Uh, what the, what the general plan amendment does is it aligns our existing general plan, which included SEQA thresholds for level of service, which the state of California has said that we are no longer, not only no longer required, but no longer allowed to do, so we wanted to make sure our general plan complied with the state law, so that's what that general plan amendment does, it just essentially says that we're gonna use BMT as our threshold for, um, for traffic and access.
So that's number two, very good. Is that good for you, Dave?
I'm still trying to sync up the resolution with the, uh, the agenda, so I'm sorry.
Okay. Um, next, the development agreement, which I think that's fine. The vesting of the tentative subdivision map and inclusionary affordable, the, the housing, I'm fine with, we've got the, uh, the ordinance down, that's fine. The vesting of the tentative subdivision map, can you go over that, please?
Sure, the vesting tentative map is essentially this plan that you see before you, but engineered so that you can see where the sewer pipes are gonna end up, where the water filtration systems are gonna end up, where the lot lines are conceptually gonna end up, or really darn close to where they're gonna be when, when we actually create them. It shows you where, um, parcelization is gonna take place for the various, uh, commercial areas, and all of that is just so that in the future, when we turn this into actual parcels and actual, you know, underground infrastructure and all the horizontal infrastructure, that, um, that it substantially conforms with that map, and that map is literally identical to, to this, it just has a level of detail that you don't really wanna include in a specific plan.
Okay, along that, along, I noticed when, when I was reading through on Saturday, the, um, the Raymar catchments, is that happening within that area, or is it further away? As far as the, the infiltration system?
So we have, in the vesting tentative map, we, we have, uh, essentially three different options for how we're gonna handle infiltration, um, uh, two for phase one and two for phase, well, it's four, I'm sorry, two for phase one and two for phase two, and it depends on whether or not we can negotiate agreements with this, with CSMB and with the Army to put some of those off-site. The reason we are working with the Army and CSMB and not putting them all onsite, uh, as our, our, you know, top-level concept, is because the Army has some stormwater issues that they need to solve, and the developer has generously provided that, you know, if you help us solve our stormwater problem, we'll help you solve yours, and then at the same time, with CSMB, uh, where we would have to put that, the low point in the development on the, on the eastern side, is also a place where we'd like to put a building, and it turns out that stormwater infiltration and buildings don't kinda, they can't really go in the same spot, so, um, it's, it's really, you know, something we've been working on with both the Army and with CSMB, we're hopeful that we can get there, but in the vesting tentative map, it provides an option where stormwater is a hundred percent infiltrated onsite, and an option where the a hundred-year, uh, storm or greater runoff would, would be allowed to go off-site.
One quick question, since we're on stormwater, all of our stormwater is going to go into groundwater, though, right? It's not gonna go out to the ocean?
That is correct.
Very good. Anything else for him? Go ahead, Danny.
Just a quick question on the tentative map, um, I couldn't tell, looking at seventy pages, so there's a lot there, um, who actually owns the streets, especially all varieties type streets that we're gonna have with bike lanes and some medians and parking, et cetera, et cetera?
So in the case where it's a public street, where everyone can access it, those streets, once they're built, will be dedicated back to the city. The maintenance of those streets will be covered either by that CFD or the HOA that we talked about previously, and that's, in the case of the publicly-owned streets, it's gonna have to be the CFD option. There will also be some streets that are only streets that are used to access commercial areas or, um, alleys that access only, you know, a handful of, of homes that may be rentals or that they may have some common ownership aspects to them, and those cases, the developer would maintain ownership and maintenance, um, obligations on those streets, and those streets might be maintained by the HOA or by the CFD.
Well, I understand where there's asphalt, that's pretty easy, but, you know, you've got curbs, gutters, medians, sidewalks, bike lanes, all of that stuff, so is there a understanding where those lines of ownership are gonna be?
Yeah, yes, there are, and those, those are on various pages on the vesting tentative map, and I know, I know it's a lot to dig into, but the, you know, basically, back of cur to the center line will be dedicated to the city, sidewalks are, are a responsibility and typically owned by the adjacent property owner. In some cases, though, that adjacent property might be a common area and part of the common area maintenance, especially, you know, where you have that, those, those linear parks, and...
Just very complex.
Right, um, but we do have conceptually a plan for ongoing maintenance of those, ongoing ownership of those, who's gonna own them, and to ensure that this development stays a nice place to live in perpetuity.
Very good. Any other questions for him? Thank you, I know I have a clear what you're, what it all is coming together now, um, and most of it is what we have already talked about in our specific plans, where unfortunately, we don't have this great audience most of the time, when we look at those, they tend to be boring and nobody wants to come to them, but, uh, we've already looked at that, so I'm good with it myself.
Yeah, the, the point I wanted to make is that, um, while the specific plan is a big and complicated document, everything else that we've asked you to consider tonight are really the implementation elements of making that specific plan happen, they don't vary in any way from the specific plan, they're just, uh, you know, the nuts and bolts details that go into implementing the specific plan.
Very good.
Okay, Dave, question on the development agreement? You just thought you were on that. I got lost in the public benefit contribution, it seemed like there was some two million dollars floating around, and then it got taken away, and then there was this option and that option, can you just kinda conceptualize that for me?
Well, there, there will be a public benefit payment of two million dollars, the, the issue is, is that, um, we currently own a fire station that's located on General Gym Ward, that we lease to the Presidio Fire Department, and it's used by our fire department, by CSMB's fire department, by the Presidio Fire Department, and occasionally by Marina's Fire Department. So since there are these multiple entities that are engaged in, in that fire department, that all need to, um, come up with a solution for if that fire department goes away, um, we wanted to make sure that if, um, if the fire station had a contribution that was required by the city, that the public benefit payment would pay for that. Now, as of right now, the nice folks at, at Presidio are working on a plan that would move the fire station, and the Army would pay for it, and then we would, you know, then the city would have some agreement with the Army to keep some fire trucks in that station. If that goes forward, then we don't need to contribute two million dollars to that fire station, and we could, uh, pull that two million dollars back and use it for some other things that we need to do, uh, around town, um, and, and around the development, so we wanted to leave that flexibility in, and that's why it's written that way.
So just, just so I'm clear, the two million represents within our portion of different parties involved in that?
Correct.
'Cause two million wasn't gonna pay for fire stations, so it's just...
No, we, we based it on the, the fire station, that's kind of a super fancy fire station, it's got, you know, mission piled roofs and, and a really nice barracks and all of this other stuff in it, at, at East Garrison, that fire station costs five point seven million dollars, all in, including the land to build, um, so we assume that as one of three primary parties that are gonna pay for it, that two million dollars would be around what we would need to contribute to build something like that.
I don't remember if it's in, I don't remember if it's in the development agreement, but I had a note about the natural gas appliances, the limitation, can you walk me through that, why, why that's in there?
Sure, it's, uh, really a measure to, um, to work on greenhouse gas emissions, um, currently Title twenty-four has a number of things in it that, um, that just actually became law, um, that will require that these be very, very efficient units as it is anyway. However, natural gas is a, a big driver of, of greenhouse gas emissions, you know, methane is a strong greenhouse gas, and me, and pipes of methane, which is what natural gas is, leak, so, um, we've had a, a number of our city council members and, and community members come to us and say that, you know, that some portion of this, we should allow people to build something that's a hundred percent electrified unit, so we wanted to make sure that that was an allowable thing within the development agreement, and then in addition to that, um, the, the developer has agreed that with some, some like kind of building-wide exceptions, that within apartment units, uh, and, and multifamily structures, the units themselves would be all electric.
So are you taking into consideration that you're just moving the greenhouse from over here to over there?
Um, that, that is a consideration, however, in, in, um, in Seaside, we have the ability, if you want to, to get, to source all of your power from a hundred percent renewable sources, um, you know, and every, most people don't know this, but right now, full of the TAIC, uh, wind, and, um, and, uh, solar thermal are all cheaper than natural gas even, and way, way cheaper than coal, and way, way cheaper than nukes, so, you, you know, we, we think that as more of these things will allow, there'll be less of a need to rely on fossil fuels to generate electricity.
'Cause that's what our plan runs on, is fossil fuel.
Yeah.
That where we get our electricity, that's why I just say we're moving it from one spot to the other.
I was wondering about, there is a movement now for, for a lot of cities adopting this , uh, stopping the natural gas expansion, which are going on around here now, so...
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just to address the EIR issue one last time, so who is gonna actually review the EIR and sign off on it? We are not tasked with that?
You, you are not, um, for our city ordinance, that is the responsibility, and due to the city council, and we will very shortly be presenting them with the final EIR.
So are we ready to make these, or are we all, that's a lot? No, I mean, we're all agreed up here, you know, I think staff did a great job of explaining to us and the breakdown of it.
Microphone, please.
We've spent...
Microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry, so sorry. They squeak so much when we have moncons from there, so we tend to turn them off at times. I commend staff for being on it, um, bringing us through this, like I said, there's a lot of pages for us to read, and, um, I skimmed through most of it, um, I thank you for your clarity of what we were looking at here as far as the actual breakdown of the resolutions. So with that, do we have a motion?
I would like to make a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty dash XX.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Composed? Saying none? So passed on this resolution appeal. The resolution, we don't have the appeal factor, is that correct, staff?
Can you print through the full title of the resolution?
Sure. The resolution of the planning commission of the city of Seaside recommending city council approve, one, the campus town specific plan, two, general plan circulation element amendments, three, zoning map and tax amendments, creating the campus town specific plan and district, four, the development agreement, five, the vesting tentative subdivision map, and six, inclusionary affordable housing agreement for the campus town property. With that, we have a first, we have a second, we have voted all in favor. Do we do the appeal factor for this, if this was just a resolution? No. Okay, with that, thank you, um, our next item will be, uh, reports from commissioners?
Thank you all.
Thank you. Do we have reports from commissioners? Reports from staff?
We'd like to mention one thing, uh, over the last month, um, a group of people have, I don't know if you're aware of this, but the city is, is, has some... but the city is, is, has some money to put in plants to help increase the number of these. Flowers and going to the various parks around town and putting in plants every month. And so I'd like to let you know that this exists and that I'll give you a advance warning for the next event we have. It's, it's a great idea and I'm also going to make our plans a nicer today.
I think it's just us having a meeting at this point anyway. On the subject of electrification, which is eliminating or reducing the use of fossil fuels in thousands, Seaside Creates is going to be hosting a Seaside Chats on that topic. So on February twenty-fifth at five-thirty, we're getting speakers that have expertise on electrification. And I'll be starting to do the PR of that next week for that Seaside Chats. But that way we can start to at least have a chance to ask professionals in the field more about that topic. So look for that sort of advertising coming. That way I'll shoot emails out to all of the commissioners.
Thank you. Okay, with that, do we have a motion to adjourn? Come on, Dave, give me a motion.
Who do we adjourn?
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, guys.
John, when fora passed, when fora first formed, the first thing.